I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we'll do the roll call of members. Mr. Jeter, District One.
Here.
Mr. Tipton, District Two.
Here.
Mr. Harren, District Three.
Here.
Mr. Bricky, District Four.
Here.
Mr. Mann, District Five.
Here.
Ms. Hood, District Six.
Here.
Ms. Kruebe, at large.
Here.
Next item on the agenda is to set the term of office for the chairman and vice chairman. That's typically been a one-year period. But that's up to the board. So we'll take any discussion or motion to set the term.
I'll make a motion. Like an one year.
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's made a motion to set the term for chairman and vice chairman at one year, seconded by Mr. Bricky. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Term is set at one year. Next, we'll do elect the chairman for 2022. Are there any nominations for chairman?
I'll nominate Danny Mann.
Mr. Jeter has nominated Mr. Mann. Any other nominations?
I make a vote to nominate and cease and throat by a commotion.
Mr. Tipton's made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Mr. Jeter. All those in favor for Mr. Mann being chairman for 2022 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Mann abstains. We'll take a short break to rearrange and then be right back.
I'm sure busy with it.
Well, I enjoy it.
You're number three.
Bring your chairman.
I will. I will.
See if you can just chair them off, hasn't it?
Welcome back, Mr. Bricky.
Thank you.
Say hello to me this morning, Mr. Bricky.
How are you?
Good.
And that's the one.
Freedom's damn free.
On freedom.
Is she going to stay down there? Free go stay down? Do I need to move down here?
Do you have one freedom?
I did, yes.
Well, I do appreciate the vote of confidence. Sit here in this middle chair and it's an honor to do that. Any of you can do this. It's, you know, a little bit more to it, not a whole lot, but I thank this whole board, anybody that called by to sit here. So thank you for your vote of confidence to sit here and it's an honor to do that. Again, Ms. Lawrence, how do welcome everyone this morning. We'll get right into our agenda. Next item is to elect the vice chairman. Do we have any nomination for vice chair?
I'll nominate Ms. Kruebe, vice chair.
Any other nominations? It's a lot entertaining. Motion nomination cease and throat by a commotion. Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Bricky's second and Ms. Kruebe's.
I abstain.
Abstain, okay. All fair vote saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried.
And I abstain.
Welcome back. I'll try to be here pretty often.
You better. Congratulations to both of you and thank you. It is an honor. Thank you all. I appreciate the vote of confidence, as you said, too.
And she has filled in a few times for me and she does a wonderful job. And so anyway, I do appreciate her being in vice chair position. And so anyway, let's get on. Next item is set the meeting date and time, which currently it is the first Wednesday of the month at eight thirty. So we'll keep it that way or unless you have another idea to change it, but we'll put that out there for a motion.
I'll make a motion to leave it as is.
Mr. Jeter made a motion to leave as is. Do we have a second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, you said second. Any discussion? All fair vote saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is to adopt the rules of procedure. Hope you had a chance to look at that. Do we have a motion to accept that, those rules as presented to you?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Kruebe's second. All fair vote saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is to approve the agendas presented to you. Do we have a motion to do so? Does anything need to amend, Ms. Lawrence?
Yes, we need to add Mr. Bostick for the audit presentation.
Okay.
We could do that at item thirteen B.
Anything else besides that?
That's all I have.
Need a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Mr. Harren made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Kruebe's second. Any discussion? All fair vote saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is to approve the minutes from our December first, two thousand twenty-one meeting. Hope you had a chance to look at those minutes and they were okay. I didn't see anything wrong with it, but anyway, if needed, most approve the minutes as presented to you.
I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second. All fair vote saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is since expression period and I have a little statement here I will read. Assistant expression period upon the meeting when anyone who wishes to address the board, our staff may do so. If you wish to speak, please come to the podium and state your name, where you're from, and the county, and what organization you represent. The board mayor may not respond to anything that you say, but we will take everything you say into account when making future decisions. Please keep your comments concise and businesslike. If no one has signed up to speak, has anyone signed up to speak?
They have not.
Okay. We have no particular order. We just ask that you take turn to speak your business. Any action will be considered after we close this expression. Okay, just a moment. Just a moment. So we are in since expression period and I have something we need to do before we go into this. We have a presentation to make. This is lady Frances Sandridge that is here, appreciates for twenty-six years of service for the safety of the county. Nip of a mask, I'm okay. And this appreciation for twenty-six years of service to assist Scott County as employee of Scott County nine one one, nineteen ninety-five to two thousand twenty-one. You've already retired. You have retired.
I have retired.
God bless you and enjoy your retirement. I retired a few years ago myself and so it's fun.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your service. Give her a hand. Anytime we can do that, it's a pleasant moment here to do that. And so thank you again for your service and to serve the county that many years. So very blessed to have you and I'm sure you'll be missed. And so we thank you for your service, really do. All right, now wants to speak, you may come to the podium's place.
Roger Steen.
Where are you from, Mr. Steen?
From the Kingdom, down in Duffield.
Duffield, okay. Welcome this morning.
Thank you. I would like to know why we can't get nothing done to our roads. Only when the gravel road is pitable, you can ask Ms. Hood. I think she lives at the end of Holland. I don't know why we can't get gravel, the road work or nothing. It is pitable what we drive through. Who do we see? Who do we call? I've called for two months now. They come work half of the road and the other half they don't work. Who do you call?
We can do something with that here for you too. We can get hold of VDOT and a lot of times they're here at our meetings.
Well, I was hoping they would be here because I'd like to ask them what they're doing. I mean, they're going to pay some of it, ask Ms. Hood. Instead of going the way where all the houses is, they went around the other way because of Ms. Hood.
Do you know the road he lives on?
I do know the road he lives on. I had nothing to do with what they're paving. That was on the plan when I was elected.
I know, but it should have come by your house.
That is an area that is not used and I have discussed that with VDOT even before I was elected, that nobody uses that section of Beeline Road, but they are paving it.
That ain't Beeline Road. That is seven fifty-three.
Well, it's still considered Beeline Road even though it has a different number.
Seven fifty-three is the right number?
Seven fifty-three is the Kingdom Road. The road kind of splits if you ain't familiar with it. You think it's all one road, but it ain't. The way they're coming is seven fifty-three.
We do have contact with them, Mr. Christian, and we'll do something to give them. They'll listen to us. There is, you can go on their website and do a work order, but we can do that too.
I've done it for two months.
Have you? Okay.
They come and work half of the road.
They did work half of it?
They did work half of it.
And it's a dirt road, gravel road.
Well, it's a dirt road. There ain't no gravel there.
All right. We will, we'll see what we can do to help you on that. And but, you know, we have little, very little control. They'll listen to us on some things. Which is state thing, we're the county thing and so, but we'll see what we can do to help you.
Somebody needs to do something. It's just like when they're working on, I don't see how they got any money left. I mean, I don't. They're working on that side of the road. There ain't no housing. They put two flags, one on each side. Why can't they just put a road closure sign up like that?
But we'll see what we can do to help you on that. I think we can and because I often text or send, or call Mr. Christian, get him to look at that and we get something done on it.
Okay, I appreciate it.
You can call me anytime that you have any issues and I always contact Mr. Christian. When anybody calls me about any roads or whatever, I contact whoever is in control of that. Of course, that's a state issue and all I can do is let Mr. Christian know that, you know, there's a need. My road was really bad recently. The holes were so big in front of my house that people would, they go too fast by my house and they would hit those holes and kind of fly up in the air. And I never contacted anybody about it. And the reason I did it is because they're doing that work down there and those big trucks pass all day long past the house and they're the reason that the road in front of my house is, stays so bad.
They worked there for two months. And I could have done what they do with a talk to two or three year olds in a week. I mean, that's just always true. What's to be truth about?
Well, I had been going to talk with Mr. Christian about that Kingdom Road anyway. I drive around sometime and check out roads and everything. And I think it is so narrow right there close to where you all live. I'm concerned about school buses because it's a drop off.
Yeah, if you meet one, you're backing up. I mean, if you're courteous to the school bus, which most people are, you'll have to back up finding a white spot.
But we'll get on.
I mean, it's going to happen sooner or later. Let's hope it never does.
Yeah, I agree.
Sooner or later, it's going to happen. Then it's too late.
Yeah, we can get some attention for your vote, so we can do.
We sure will.
Okay, I'll sort.
Appreciate this. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Anyone? Thank you, ladies. We'll close this expression period, which usually we discuss things after the citizen's press, but we discussed it when we came here and I think that's necessary to do that. But we'll, Mr. Steen will get on that and we'll help you with it the best we can. But like I said, we, there's so many issues, in the wintertime especially, VDOT has so many issues. And it's hard to get.
You can look at I ninety-five and see what kind of issues they have.
Well, you got that right. Yeah, the master twenty hours that on the interstate and so. Anyway, we appreciate you coming and but we'll see what we can do to help you on this. And but it is an issue, but the thing VDOT's doing, they usually done a lot of internal stuff. They contracted out. And it's a, it's a different order than what we grew up with, what they're doing. They contract stuff out and getting stuff done, but we'll see what we can do to help you on that.
Yeah, but when they contract stuff out, that's like the work they had just done. They got a supervisor sitting in that truck eight hours a day watching. Why, if I contract somebody to do a job, I expect them to do it. I don't want to bait themselves.
Yeah, I agree. Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
All right, next item is public hearing. If there's anything else in citizen's question for me, anyone, give you a chance to chime in if you need to. The times I forget to do that, so. Anyway, next item is public hearing on the possible adoption of an ordinance to amend the Scott County Animal and Rabies Control Ordinance at section eleven D to indicate a transfer fee for rescue. Do you want me to address that, Ms. Lawrence, anything about that before we go into public hearing?
Ms. Kegel might have something to add, but I don't think anything.
We're just adding rescues to the ordinance so that they pay the ten dollar rescue fee. Transfer fee.
And with that, we will go into the public hearing. Anyone here wishing to speak? Anyone? If not, we'll come out of the public hearing and we'll need a motion to approve this ordinance as presented to you. Do we have a motion to do something? Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton's second. Any discussion? All fair vote saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Next item is item thirteen, the public hearing on the possible adoption of an ordinance to levy food in Bearbridge Tack in Scott County, Virginia, with said levy being at six percent. So we'll go into this public hearing on this. We talked about it a lot back when we first started this. Six percent is the max on it. And so we'll start at that and we'll go into the public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak about this levy? Anyone? I was hoping some of the restaurant people would be here so to help us a little bit with this, but anyway, we'll come out of the public hearing. We'll discuss here among the board members. Any discussion?
Do we have a projected of what it might be bringing in to the county when we do that?
It will exclude the towns that already have a meals tax in place. So, you know, we're limited on the number of restaurants or places that you can get takeout in the delis in the county, but there's no way to estimate what that would be.
Of course, we'll be collecting off of out of state people too that.
Oh, yeah, anybody that comes to the county.
It's not one just be.
One of the big restaurants that'll have an impact is McDonald's in Duffield because you've got all the traffic on twenty-three that'll be coming through there and that is not in the town limits.
Is this McDonald's in the town limits of Gay City?
I believe so. I believe it is.
Now, where the, where the line was, so. There is some others around, you know, one in Nicholsville, Dungannon. You got a few other places that do have the restaurants that will, that will affect. And again, this is something that will, if you eat out, you'll be paying, paying this. And so anyway, any other discussion?
What about at your local gas station? I mean, will all, all food or is it just going to be?
Well, for an example, Rally Mart, that would be included because they have the deli where you can eat, bar, and takeout. But candy bars, chips, things like that, no, we're not included.
Any other discussion?
These are the same rules and regulations I suppose that whoever city Gay City have, as far as the percentage, is it different?
I don't know what their percentage is.
If their percentage is less than six percent, would ours bring it up to that inside the, do you know, like?
No, I don't think we are eligible in the towns if they have the meals tax already in place.
I don't know what the towns are. Most everybody's that I saw was less than. I didn't see anybody with six percent.
Yeah, I didn't either.
Lee has five. A lot of them at four.
All righty. Any other discussion? All right, we entertain a motion to approve this and so, do we have a motion to approve this levy as presented to you? Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
All right, Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, Mr. Harren's second. Any other discussion? All fair vote saying aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? So unanimous and that will, when will that go into effect? Do we know?
It takes effect today by ordinance, but the Commissioner of Revenue has work to do before it will actually be implemented.
So it'll be a little while yet before.
Yeah, it'll still be a little.
I thought it would be about any of what happened at work and so. All righty, that's what happened. Our next item is item thirteen B. Mr. Bostick is here on our audit, so he would say.
Who would have thought it's already a year since I was here to see you?
I thought you just here last month. You're here this many years, so welcome back.
Yeah, it's good to be back there. We've completed your audit again and I appreciate your business. Scott County is a great place. I wanted to bring your attention to page twenty-five and twenty-six, which is the count, is your part of the county's financial statement. The general fund.
We have copied that breakers in on our tablet.
We do not have a copy.
I'll just explain it. The county, this year, the general fund went down six hundred sixteen thousand two hundred seventy dollars. And what that means is you spent that much more than you took in in the year of the end, in June the thirtieth, twenty-one. Now, the year before that, you had a three million dollar surplus, right? But that was from the COVID money that you had and hadn't spent yet. So that year, you, your fund balance raised three million dollars. Now, so this year, you took six hundred thousand of that back, right? So that's how that worked. Now, the school system, which you're responsible for financing, went up a million dollars. So together, the school and the general government that you earned charge of, of spending, is in a positive position. Part of that million dollars, that part of that six hundred thousand dollar loss is the six hundred thousand dollars you gave to the school system.
It's going to be even uglier next year, so you give you the prepared, it gets more and more to them, you know, but anyway.
Your financial position is, has remained strong. You have total assets of two, twenty-five million. And you have liabilities of two point seven million. That's a pretty good position. But part of that position is unavailable at the time of the report, at the time of June the thirtieth, right? Part of that would be that there was property tax you hadn't received yet that is part of that. And also, you had the ARPA funds that hadn't been spent yet, and that's part of that amount of money that you have available. But to be in that position just goes, you all have been very frugal and very efficient and still progressive. You know, I see the microphones. That's just impressive. That was last year in Hummer.
Yeah.
Thank you again. Everything was good and everybody was nice. That's something important, but they were.
That's important to us.
And they do a good job. You have a good staff. Any questions?
Do you have a general fund balance, what it was at June thirtieth? I don't want to blindside you, but.
I do have. Your, your fund balance, if you take away those things I was telling you about, is five million, seven hundred thousand dollars. And you have liabilities of two point seven. Good position.
Mr. Bostick, would you care to explain the school activity fund issued with the board?
Okay, the nineteen, in the year nineteen, the governmental county standards board says that the school activity funds have to be included in the county state. Those, that school activity funds is the funds that the schools are in charge of. Football games, sales of candy, sales of pencils, lunch money used to do, now you don't have that. So that's all into each individual school and those schools take in a lot of money during the year. So if you looked at your county, your schools would take, would be responsible for about one point two billion dollars. And so the, the board has said that that has to be included in your report. This year, it was to take effect. And the school system did not get the correct report this year. And so you had to have a, an audited statement and that statement has to be on the same basis that the county statements on. So that means you had to do the, where we used to do it on cash in and cash out, now that statement has to be done with accruals, accounts receivable and accounts payable. And so it's, it's a, it's a different world, but that's what the requirement is, right? So state statute says we have to, that the school system has to do that, I mean, this activity fund. And they did not do it this year. They had, did not have the correct audit. So when you look at your report, there'll be a listing of all the funds that we audit. And the one for the school activity fund will be disclaimed because we didn't, we couldn't audit it. It was not, wasn't audited. So we couldn't fit it in the audit, you see. And each, then the school system's responsible for engaging the auditor for those.
That's better than me trying to explain it.
So it says that when you read the report, it was, you know, it will always say that was disclaimed on the, the school activity funds.
Were they made aware, the school system, were they made aware of this or how, how is that translated to them?
It all comes through the Board of Education, which tells the auditor what, how to audit, right? And they haven't changed that in years. But we have to still do our professional audit of stuff besides what they said. And there's terminologies that you use, right? As a CPA, I can issue a compilation report, a review report, or an audit report. And that's the only monopoly that we have, right? Anything else I do, you can, that's the only license that I have to do. And so when you get that report that says, when the government, the losses, you have to have it audited, that's a legal term. You had a, a agreed upon procedure. Now, most people would have thought they had an audit, right? That's terminology that's, we, CPA's top of that. And so what the school system did is they agreed with a firm to do this. They checked, you know, this many receipts and they checked this many checks. And they spoke with the bookkeeper, you know, those type of, if they didn't do the audit, which is a process that we go through. And to determine that there was no, to the best that we can, that everything is recorded properly and everything was there that should have been. So now that we are aware of that, that won't happen again.
Okay, that's what, that was going to be my next question.
It's just, it was new for everybody. I do audit some schools and I had to go back and redo it to put it on the correct standard. It's hard to charge them for two audits. I didn't, but it's, you know, it takes your time.
So is it the school's responsibility to straighten this out?
They've already, I think, I think they've already done that.
Okay, thank you.
It's just like I said, terminology that we use and I think that's what was the issue is when you get a report that has our name on it, you immediately think it was audited, all right? If I give you a report, you think that I have, I have expressed an opinion. If I give you a report, you think that I have, I have expressed an opinion, and, and so that's not what happened. But they thought, you know, they thought so, but I couldn't do it in the report.
All right. Any other questions for me?
Now, as far as anything else, there was no other problem, and no cause of me to accept, anything except that I disclaimed on, on the activity fund, on the activity fund. I don't have those numbers before me, but I bet to go, part of three schools that make up most of the one point two million dollars, right, and football costs a lot of money to come and go, and basketball costs a lot of money, and you take the money you began with, and the money you take in, that's what you're responsible for. And so you've got people taking care of enterprises, maybe five, six, seven hundred thousand dollar income a year. So you have, they need to be looked at.
Is there anything, as a board, we can do differently on that? I mean, I don't know how we could, the school system's got to do it, I mean, it's.
No, the board, that's why there's no exception in states in there, other than, than that, as far as everything else, that there's an unmodified opinion. And that's what we want, unmodified. I hated that happening. I've never had to do that before, but it was not a big issue in that it was the activity fund, the small fund, and it was in reporting, not in, it was the method of reporting, not in the actual activity.
Well, point to me, it's a lot, I mean, we're a small county, that's, that's a lot.
And all the counties around you there, I mean, you're not.
It's not unique to us, I'm sure, it's a.
And you're not, unique to you that you didn't have any of it. There are other systems of it locally.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
All right. Hats off to her, the folks in the counties making this happen, and as far as getting to get audited, and, you know, it's been like this since I've been elected, there's never been an issue with their staff here, but anyway, you all, you all do great with it, and I do, I do commend you for what you do. On this, we're, this budget here is, is gonna be another prime year, with a possible another one point two million added going to the school system. And with six point three this year, I think, that's what, they're about, it's gonna be about seven and a half million next year, and with this next budget year, so, I don't know, the hits keep coming, and I've getting phone calls almost daily on this reassessment. Had a lady call me yesterday, she's got property in Hynna, but she is furious. We obviously send down the equalization board, and I'm hoping that a lot of this will, will be the right thing to be done, I guess what I'm looking forward toward our folks, but it's, I said, if there's any fallacy in our system of government, it's always designed to grow, designed to get bigger, and regardless of the economic, economic situation we're in, it, it gets bigger and taxes, you know, go higher, but the cost here, Mr. Dings talking about the stuff, the diesel fuel, stuff that we're having that's gone up, and it's, it's hard to budget that, but the, the cost of running the county, it's just, it's extremely high, and there, I said, when I talk fifty-two budget, I think we, we actually fund fifty-two budgets.
Fifty-something.
Yeah, so, and far departments, I know Dave Gill is here from Scott County, I say the crew, and we, we level fund them for the most part for years, far departments level fund them, and you know their cost is going up and up, and so, anyway, this reassessment we're going through is tough, it is, and people are, are very, very concerned about it. And so I don't know, we, I was issued, I think you said, in Lee County, they got issues there too with their reassessment, and, but hopefully the equalization board, it did get approved, those that'll be on that, and the folks, I encourage them to come and go before those people, I think they'll be very far people to come and look at their situation, and the lady called me yesterday, she was just in tears. She said, well, hers had gone up some property that she had and retired, and I, you know, she said, I don't have anything to pay. So anyway, I'll get off my stump speech here, but the audit, Freddie, I've done well with this, looks like, you know, so, anyway, to hear him pleased and bragging on the county a little bit there with, you know, with a two point seven million liability, and twenty-five million here in assets that we were working with, so anyway, we're blessed to have the folks here running things. Anything else? I've said enough. All right. Next item is item fourteen. We don't need to vote on anything, do we? Don't need to do anything with that, other than just receive the audit report. Next item is, is both Boys and Girls Club, Lisa Bellharts, I think, I pronounced that, is she here? There you are.
Good morning.
Good morning. First of all, thank you, I appreciate you allowing me the time this morning. Tough act to follow, why I'm here, but I just wanted to first and foremost, give you an update. Boys and Girls Clubs announced, been in Scott County, we'll, we're here four and a half years, it'll be six years, June sixth, and so we're very excited about that, and we're very excited that we've been able to remain a part of the community. What we're here about, I wanted to talk with you today, is that we are serving a hundred and sixty-nine young people in New York County, and Boys and Girls Club is open to everyone in the county, although we are stationed currently in Weber City, any child in the county of Scott County is allowed to attend the Boys and Girls Club. We do charge a small fee for our young people, it's twenty-five dollars a year for membership fee, and then there is a weekly program fee. When we first started, the weekly program fee was at ten dollars, and we scholarshipsed ninety-three percent of the young people we were serving, we scholarshiped them in. Due to costs, of course, as you all were just hearing and talked about, and things have gone up, and minimum wage is, is really the, the big one for us, that's hurt us a little bit, and we had to raise our program fees this year to twenty-five dollars a week. Again, we are scholarshiping sixty percent of the young people that we currently serve, sixty percent of them are scholarshiped in, so they pay five dollars or zero dollars a week, it just kind of depends on their, their income. We're still providing, I apologize, it's out.
Okay.
We are providing young people in programs in five core program areas, so those of you who are not familiar with Boys and Girls Clubs, I'm gonna run through those very quickly, just so you have an idea of what we do provide for young people. We provide programs in education and career development, so everything from homework help to what our young people want to do when they get older. We've been fortunate, we did receive a grant through the Takala Foundation, which is part of Taco Bell. They awarded us a grant so that we could do some culinary arts, and we're working with the culinary arts students here, which is wonderful, our kids are enjoying that. And as of this month, once a month, we will be pulling the high school students from the culinary arts program, as well as our members, and they come together, and they put together a meal, and those meals are then gonna be distributed to first responders in the county. So we're excited about the ability to do that, and to say thank you to our first responders, and for our caregivers who have worked so diligently and so hard the last couple of years in particular, so we just wanna say thank you to them, and that's the way our young people can do that. We have, excuse me, sports, fitness, and recreation, so we do provide young people an opportunity to get out and be fit, and we all know how important that is, especially with the pandemic and everything else that's going on, we've gotta get our young people up and moving, and it doesn't mean they have to be all-star athletes, but we need to, and help them understand that lifelong moving is very important for us, and that everything that we put in our mind, body, and soul is gonna come out one way or another, and we wanna make sure that we're giving them the skills to do that in a positive way, so we continue that. We have arts, the arts, which include everything from everyday arts and crafts to dance, music, and theater when we're able to, and so we expose them to those arts, and we allow them to just explore and see what they may like. The kids always make fun of me, 'cause I'm very, very non-artistic, my stick figures don't look like stick figures, but I like art, and I know what I like, and I love to go to see plays and so forth, and so we're teaching our young people the same thing, that we may not be good at something, but that doesn't mean we can't appreciate it and get back to that when possible. We have health and life skills, and again, going back to what I said just a moment ago about everything that we put in our mind, bodies, and souls is gonna come out one way or another, so in our healthy life skills, we're teaching our young people not just to say no, but how do they say no? How do they avoid some of the pressures that are available today, and, and the constant barrage that we have in our society for young people, and for everyone to choose negative things and, and take the easy way, and so we're teaching them how they can push back against that, and do that so that they can stay healthy and happy throughout their lives. The last one we have is, excuse me, character and leadership development, and for us as an organization, that is our number one, teaching our young people to have a moral compass, teaching them that we are very grateful and appreciative that we receive from the county and from the city, but that we have to give back as well, and we may not monetarily be able to give back, especially as young people, you know, but there's other things that we can do, so things that we're doing with Takala, being able to give back to our first responders, being able to come in front of the board and speak, and, and thank you all for what you've done in the past. When we first started, you all awarded us three thousand dollars a year for a three-year term. Unfortunately, the third year, things were low hectic, and so we didn't receive that, but we're coming today in front of you to ask that you would consider a five thousand dollar gift, or, or grant to the Boys and Girls Club to help offset our costs, so that we can continue to provide programs for young people, and we can continue to grow. There are so many young people in this county, of course, you all know, that there is absolutely nothing available for them, and we want to be able to try and supply as much as possible at a reasonable cost. Childcare, there's some childcare available, it's a little more expensive, and, and it's much needed, we do not take toddlers, so, so it's, it's very needed for the younger ones, but, you know, we want to be able to continue our program, we have every intention of doing so. We're very grateful for the school board. The school board has provided us a location, so, so we get rent free there, they provided our internet, they also, through a grant, a program that they receive, they provide meals to our young people every day after school. We would not be able to contain and sustain on what we're currently doing. Our budget for, for our location here at Scott County is about sixty thousand dollars a year, so we try and keep it as minimal as we can. We do pay our staff, all our staff are paid, paid professionals, they're youth development professionals. We do not allow young people to be in areas alone without a paid staff, as well as our volunteers. Everyone is vetted, including our staff, they all get background checks, we have drug screening, and we do physicals. We do accept volunteers, and we have so many wonderful, wonderful volunteers, but our protocols through our national organization is that a volunteer cannot work alone with a child, there has to be a paid staff person as well, and so we do a lot of group activities, of course, and no one is ever one-on-one, one-on-one with a child, it is always in a group setting, and if you need to have counseling, et cetera, then we, we do have another person available so that, you know, they're never alone with children. Safety is our number one concern, it's our number one focus that we do, and we wanna make sure that we continue that. I'm gonna stop now and allow you all to ask any questions that you might have.
Any comments or questions?
I was in the school system a few years, and I'm aware of Boys and Girls Club, and it is very beneficial, forty years down. So I, I do know that it's a worthy club, and you do a great job. What age groups is it, that, does it entail?
We start at age six, and we go through eighteen, or if they're still in high school, they still are allowed to attend. We find that, especially in Scott County, because we're located at Weber City Elementary currently, we do get some kids that are thirteen, fourteen, but very few, most are involved. Once they get cars and money, and the hormones start kicking, we tend to lose them when they become teenagers, but they do come back and they volunteer, and we do allow the students from the middle school, as well as the high school, with the volunteer hours that they have to supply, we do allow them to come to the club and, and get their service hours in when possible.
Good. You did a good presentation.
Oh, thank you, so appreciate that.
This budget here, the budget committee, when we appoint them, we'll look at this, and so we'll see what happens.
Okay, I appreciate your time.
And thank you all for what you do, I mean, it's really been important, a hundred and sixty-nine kids is a lot, touching a lot of lives, so.
We're hoping we continue to grow. Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. Next item is item fifteen, Kenny Fannin Bridge Dedication Resolution. If you had a chance to look at that, I hope you have. Kenny Fannin, I guess most of you know who he is and what he contributed to the county, especially the Duffield area, so on this resolution, if you've had a chance to look at it, I hope you have. Need to do anything with that, if y'all wanna go ahead and go with what we got, or anything to amend it, your call.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
Some of Mr. Fannin's family is here, I don't know if they have anything that they want to say.
Then we'll start the camp, if you wanna come and pout, you can speak, anyone of you, Brad.
Yes, I'll speak for everyone here. Thanks so much for allowing us to be here today, and thanks for the resolution, we definitely appreciate that, and your, oh, sorry, and your consideration. This is my grandmother, if you don't know her. But do wanna thank you for your consideration of this, you know, the bridge there, it crosses railroad, and I just figured, being locked with grandpa, I can't tell you the number of trains over the years that we've ridden under that bridge, and number of local mothers who ran over, under the bridge too, thinking it'd be something special for him, and just appreciate your consideration.
Well, he was a railroad man, I mean, he, I guess he would appreciate that too, yeah.
Yeah, he would be.
Yeah, he would. I thought the world of him, I know, Duffield days was his thing, and so he, I mean, a great contributor, you know, to the, to the county, especially, I said, Duffield was amazing, what he did.
Thank you.
Yeah, he is always very special to me, and I went all the way through school with his son, so Mr. Fannin was a part of my life, ever since I can remember, and I really appreciate you, Ms. Fannin, and the fam, the Fannin family, and I think it is great that.
We appreciate y'all's work.
While you're there, I'm gonna read this, the last part of the resolution, I'll read it into the record, I'll read the whole thing, the last part. So now therefore be it resolved that Scott, that Scott County, in accordance with requirements of section three, three point two dash two one three of the Code of Virginia, does hereby request that the Commonwealth Transportation Board name structure number six five nine seven, located on Route eight seventy-one, Natural Town Parkway, in Scott County, as a Kenny, Kenneth Kenny Fannin Memorial Bridge. That's the last part of this, and so I wanna read that into the record, and so it's an honor to, to do this, and it is a thank you, Ms. Sid, for taking the charge on this and getting it done, so, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, with that, we entertain a motion on this resolution.
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman, that it be accepted.
Ms. Sid made the motion, do we have a second? Ms. Krueger second? Any discussion? All three of them saying aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. The next item on the resolution, this on the city of Bristol coming into the regional jail system, and they've got a, well, they're coming in, there's a lot of stuff they have to do, and they've agreed to do that, including paying a minimum amount of inmates, and so on, that they will, will be paying for, and so it's money upfront to get this done, so hopefully, the overall jail cost may go down a little bit by including them into the regional jail system. Any discussion, Ms. Orange, Ms. Kate, do you need to say anything about it?
The resolutions are in your packet that you're considering, as well as the consolidated amendment and consent agreement, where there is debt service on the regional jail facilities. VRA also had to approve letting the city of Bristol join the regional jail system. They have agreed to the terms that the regional jail re-board set out before them, and some of those is a premium of two million dollars, paid over ten years, they will purchase two new transport vans, guaranteed to pay for at least two hundred inmates, even if they have less, of course, if they have over two hundred, they'll pay their actual number, and will completely close their current jail, it can be used for a holding facility for court, but they can no longer operate. So for this to take effect, all the localities that are involved in the Southwest Virginia Regional Jail Authority have to approve a resolution.
All right. I read through the resolution, it's good, and I'm, I'm surprised they accepted some of the terms on that, it's pretty expensive for them to come in, so, anyway, but like I said, overall cost eventually may help, help the cost to go down, pray and make charge, that will happen.
That's what I'm hoping, that's what I'm hoping, that's what I read, that's how I read it.
That's why I did too, so we definitely need to approve this, I think, but, you know, your vote will decide this. All right, any other discussion? Any motion to approve this resolution as presented to you?
I make it.
Ms. Krueger made a motion, Mr. Jeter's second. Can I go with that?
Sure.
All right, any discussion? All three of them saying aye? Aye? Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the budget calendar for this fiscal year, we, quite a few meetings will be happening, and so, anyway, if you had a chance to look at that, calendar idea, it was good to me, but anyway, any motion to approve.
Sure.
All right, any discussion? All fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the budget calendar for this fiscal year. Uh, we, quite a few meetings will be happening and, uh, so, anyway, if you had a chance to look at that, uh, calendar idea, it was good to me, but anyway, any motion to approve the budget calendar as presented?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Mr. Chairman made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Krueger, second? Any discussion? All fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So, motion carried. Next item is the capital improvement committee. Who served on this time right now?
It was Mr. Bricky and Ms. Krueger.
Okay.
And according to the bylaws, it's a three-year term, so, we're gonna start that this year with both the planning commission, they have two representatives and two from the board of supervisors. So, just keep that in mind, um, if that's something you want to serve on, it's the capital improvement, that it will be for a three-year term as long as you're on the board of supervisors.
Okay. All right, do we have anyone, any volunteers? And Ms. Krueger and, uh, Mr. Bricky have served well and so, the other five of us, everybody wants to volunteer.
Something they want to consider, maybe Danny, before they do this, is usually if they're on that, they're not on the budget.
Right.
I won't consider that before you volunteer for this if you don't have, to me, I just remind.
I don't mind serving on it. I mean, I haven't, it's been a while since I have and I was on the budget committee for the, yeah, last time, so, I don't mind being one of the, of the two, serving on the capital improvement. Anyone else? I want to exclude you too, so.
Thank you.
You want to serve on, so I'll meet you.
Sure.
So, Ms. Hood will serve with me on that and, uh, as Chairman, I can point those myself and Ms. Hood.
We'll get started later this month with our meetings on that.
Okay.
Okay.
The requests for capital improvements have been sent out, um, to all the departments. Send that out the end of December, so, while we get those in pretty soon and then we'll get started.
Okay. All right, we're done. Next item is the ratification of the BEC documents. Ms. Orange, if you would, discuss that briefly.
The BEC documents are required, um, to give Mr. Roth authorization to pull the records that he needs from the DMV and I have completed those. I emailed those to you out, or emailed those out to you to make sure they were okay before I submitted them, but we just need to ratify, uh, the authority to approve those documents.
Okay. All right. Let's ratify, they'll take a vote of the board here. Do we have a motion to approve the, these documents?
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Hood made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second? Any discussion? All fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Item twenty, we've been here an hour ago. Next item, uh, is something that, uh, dealing with is something everybody's dealing with. The lady mentioned about this new minimum wage is going to affect eleven dollars, eleven fifty, what is that for you?
It's eleven dollars.
Eleven. It's the new minimum wage and it's gonna affect budgets everywhere. Anyway, um, small business.
What's been? Okay, I'm sorry. No, go ahead.
The small business is gonna be hurt with this and, uh, and, you know, I don't know, but the thing about minimum wage is never intended to raise the family on. It's a starting pay for people, but anyway, it's mandated and now they're doing this and the small business is gonna be hurting out of the county. I mean, we're, I don't know, uh, it's gonna cause a lot of issues with a lot of folks, but go ahead, Ms. Orange.
What you have on your tablet, uh, is updated, as you can see, like grade eight through twelve took, um, an adjustment because of the minimum wage, wage increase. So, I updated those to show the eleven dollars an hour and then the only other change, um, we updated those with the three percent cost of living increase and then the collections truck driver salary has changed, um, the beginning salary to thirty-two thousand. So, those are the changes, um, that were made.
At the old rate, I know Mr. Daniels deals with that and his having, uh, to get some of those CDLs, uh, you know, that's what they were paying, so, we've all discussed this among ourselves and it went to thirty-two thousand, which we got a couple of good applicants, I think, and been trying to get the people, it's working out, but still even that is pretty low, but, uh, to get people CDLs and so on, it's getting harder to do, but anyway, I think this is something that needs to be, so, do we need to vote on this up to, credit scale?
Yeah.
I thought we did, want to make sure. But you can see it there, it's on your tablet, uh, what the, the starting salaries will be for these, these folks and, uh, so, anyway.
Do we still need to look at it more in depth?
If you want to have a salary survey done by an outside firm, we can start that process with your authority. Uh, the last time one was done was in two thousand and five.
Okay.
And what they do is they'll have everyone do, uh, like a survey of what their job duties are and they compare our salaries to other similar localities in the state of Virginia. Uh, so, if that's something the board wants to do, we can't get that done in time for budget year because it is, you know, we'd have to give an RFP to get bids and then, you know, vet those, do interviews and move forward. So, I don't think we can get that done with the timeline, but you could, it's something that you could adopt, you know, into the next budget year if they be.
Do you have any idea what that costs?
Last time, um, I've got the invoices, it was under $10,000, I believe is what we found.
Well, that was two thousand and five.
That was two thousand and five, so, it's a decent cost, yeah. And if that's something you want to include in the budget, um, the cost for that survey, we could go ahead and get an RFP out and get people in and then, you know, put that in there that it would start on July first and then that way we'd kind of know what cost to put in the budget as we work through the budget workshop.
I think it's a good idea.
I do too.
I think we should.
Okay. So, if you want to do a motion and approval, we can start working up an RFP and get the process started and that way we'll have a cost to put in next year's budget.
I'll make that motion.
All right. Mr. Chairman made a motion on this. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right. Ms. Hood, second? Any discussion? All fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? So, motion carried. Next item is road abandonment route, uh.
We still need the, you need a motion on the pay scale.
Okay. Sorry about that. All right, on the pay scale, we need to vote on that, so, do we have a motion to approve the pay scales presented to you?
Removed.
Mr. Jeter made a motion. Do we have a second?
So, second.
Mr. Bricky, second? Any discussion? All fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Thank y'all for keeping me straight. On these road abandonments, uh, it's, uh, it's on your tablet, right? You can see what road they're talking about and this will start the process of doing that and I'm sure V-Dot will be involved in it whenever it comes time to formally do this, uh, so, anyway, any discussion on, on, uh, what we're doing here?
The best I remember all this was the guys were here, they'd owned the property and they all agreed.
Owned the road.
Yeah.
Say again.
On the road, um, seven-twenty, they were here. There was three, I believe, three residents that spoke. Um, the Wades were not here, but they, I believe they contacted Ms. Hood some time back about their situation. They're kind of on a dead end. And V-Dot said that we would need some kind of turnaround spot there. I guess if it comes, it's like a dirt road, if you go out, you know, you've got to have a place to turn.
Yeah. Yeah. That was on Route seven-twenty, right? Is that correct?
Route seven-twenty is the one where citizens were here to speak about.
Right, yeah. That's what I remembered. I thought I hit it right. Okay.
And the maps of those are on your tablet.
So, we probably have a public hearing in March, it's a long time. We have to post the road in three places for thirty days.
All right.
And put it in a paper.
So, we'd authorize the advertisement for the.
I think the resolution that you adopt does all that.
Okay.
So, you just adopt that resolution.
Do we do it separately or can we do it together?
It's all together in the same resolution.
All righty. So, do we have a motion on the resolution on these two roads, seven-twenty and seven-fifty-seven?
I make the motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Ms. Hood made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Chairman, second? Any discussion? All fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Moving right along. Next item is, uh, bookkeeping. Uh, Ms. Dickerson.
Please appropriate $21,075 to Sheriff's Vehicle Replacement, three-one-two zero-zero dash eighty-oh-one for insurance claim received with positive trade-off. And appropriate $13,660 to state paid contributions, three-two-two zero-zero-dash-five-six-four-five from Virginia Department of Fire Programs Fund, five-twenty-two dispersment received with positive trade-off. That's all the appropriations.
All right. I need a motion on these appropriations. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Bricky made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second? Any discussion? All fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion passed. Grant?
Please accept DCJS Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant Number eight-eight-six-six and if accepted, please establish revenue code three-one-two-four-zero-four-zero-zero-seven-four with the following expense codes, four-dash-one-dash-three-one-two-two-zero-dash-one-one-zero-zero for salaries, twenty-one-hundred for employers' costs, twenty-two-ten employers' cost VRS, twenty-three-hundred employers' share health insurance, twenty-four-hundred break-life insurance and twenty-six-hundred unemployment shirt, insurance. And please accept DCJS Burn, Jag, Tasers Grant Number nine-two-one-eight and if accepted, please establish revenue code three-one-two-four-zero-four-zero-zero-seven-five with the following expense codes for tasers, four-dash-one-dash-three-one-two-three-seven-dash-eight-one-oh-two. And please accept Virginia Circuit Court Records Preservation Grant Number twenty-two-two-FY-dash-zero-three-three and if accepted, use already established expense code four-dash-one-dash-two-one-six-six-one-dash-six-zero-one-two.
Can you, motion on the grants?
So moved.
All right. Ms. Krueger? Ms. Krueger made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Hood, second? Any discussion? All fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
And please establish the following expense codes with the Core House Security Fund, four-dash-one-one-dash-three-one-two-zero-zero-dash-eight-two-ten employers' cost VRS, twenty-three-hundred employers' share health insurance and twenty-four-hundred break-life insurance.
Okay. On stacking these codes, do we have a motion to do so?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tipton made a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Bricky, second? Any discussion? All fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Ms. Hood. Next item is idle, his appointments, uh, he had two for the EDA. Ms. Fannin, if you have those.
We have two appointments for the Economic Development Authority, Eric Klein, Bank Service, and so, and our applications are.
Okay. Now, the first one, do we have any nominations for the first appointment on the EDA?
I'll nominate Lynn Vansler.
All right. Ms. Vansler, the nominee, do you have any of the nominations?
Motion nomination cease and vote by acclamation.
Motion nomination cease, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Jeter, second? Uh, all fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried. The next position, Ms. Fannin. We don't did it now, I'm sorry, you know that, it's, um, and I'm catching a, uh.
I'll nominate Eric Klein.
Eric Klein?
Yeah.
Thank you. Bailed me out here.
I'll second.
All right. Eric Klein, you're right. Okay, Mr. Bricky made a motion on, uh, Mr. Lane. Do we have any other nominations?
Daryl nominated him.
Hmm? He nominated?
Daryl nominated.
Was there any other nominations?
Right. He seconded, but you don't usually get a second in front of the nomination.
All right. All fair and voting saying aye?
I don't need a motion for acclamation.
Okay. I've never sat in this chair before, so. All right. Uh, meeting, motion nomination cease, vote by acclamation, did I get it right?
You got it right.
Okay.
You want to do that?
Mr. Bricky made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, good. Thank y'all. All fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? It's fun sitting here. Y'all try sometimes, so. Get my tongue tangled up. All right. Next item, Ms. Kegley?
I just have one thing to talk to y'all about. Uh, last Tuesday, the Supreme Court of Virginia completed their work on redistricting and issued a final order establishing the voting districts. Uh, so, since that process is now complete, we need to work on our districts and precincts, which we do by ordinance, so, I'm just asking for your authority to, when we get ready, which may be next month, probably not, probably March, to update those ordinances with any changes.
Okay.
So, I just need that authority to advertise those public hearings.
All right, do we have a motion to authorize Ms. Kegley to do these advertisements?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Chairman made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second? Any discussion? All fair and voting saying aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed? Motion carried.
That's all I have. Unless you all have questions?
Any questions for our county attorney? Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for keeping me straight. I need, I wish you'd sit in the car used to, she could kick me and get me straight. She's too far away to do that, so. All right. County attorney straight around items. Just so much.
On your Treasurers Account Bilts Report that's in your folder, the general fund balance after claims is twelve million, four hundred and sixty-seven thousand, ninety-two ninety-nine dollars and forty-one cents. And on your claims, I've got some scribble, uh, because we did have a large amount this time, fire and rescue totaled four hundred and thirty-four thousand, thirty-one dollars and seventy-three cents out of your total. I just wanted to put that as a side note, because that's the majority. And we did have, uh, an entry error on one of the bills yesterday, had to redo a check. So I had already printed everything, so we need to add three dollars to the total amount of claims. That's one million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five cents are your total claims that you'll be approving today. So take a look at the over five thousand and see if you've got any questions about any of those.
On the Armstrong construction, is that final payment?
Yes, that's, except for some contingency, but that's, I believe, around twenty thousand dollars. That's for the fire training facility. And it is complete, except for the water and fire hydrants. So we'll be having a ribbon cutting, uh, coming up in the spring, and of course, I'll let everybody know when that's going to take place, as we get it scheduled.
If you had a chance to stop by and look at it, they were, just touched up a few things, Daryl and I stopped, and it's really amazing. It is what they, what they've done there, and it's going to be a big asset for fire departments, and probably some of the joining counties might want to use it from time to time, too, so it's going to be good. And the location, that was great. It's perfect. About twenty-three, Daniel Boone, it's good.
And the amount for fire and rescue is paying out their total allocations for this year. So we won't have those coming up anymore this fiscal year.
That twelve billion that's in the fund, I noticed it's up from last year.
The school system hasn't drawn down as much money this fiscal year as last year. A million dollars of that is from that.
I was just wondering. I was excited, I'm not first for that.
Yeah, don't get too excited. And they've only dropped down a million dollars of their six million plus that they give, so you, you know, you've got five million plus that are coming off of there for the school system.
Daryl's feeling good, do you ask that? No, I don't feel...
I should have given that.
Yeah, that's just part of the business, so, anyway.
And that is the reality.
I want you to feel good for a month or two.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Okay.
So amount you need to approve is one million, one hundred and forty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five cents.
One of the bigger monthly claims we've had, but anyway, it's, a lot's coming out of just one time occurrence at the fire department, so.
All right. Any comments or discussion, if not, we entertain a motion to pay the bills.
I'm making the motion, we'll pay bills, Mr. Chairman.
Miss Sood made a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Tipton, second. Any discussion? All fair and voting, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried. Anything, Miss Lanis?
I don't have anything, and, uh, Mr. Kilgore will not be able to be here today for his presentation.
Do we have anything for close session?
Not that I'm aware of.
We don't have anything. We're getting close to the end here, I'm telling you, without taking a break. All right, we're down to the last item, item twenty-seven. Comments, requests, recommendations from the board's advisors. Mr. Jeter, do you have anything?
Yeah, I noticed, uh, there's a lot of litter along the roads. Are they picking up any litter now?
Stacy's saying the people that he has on the assignment highway are doing their assignments, uh, but I don't think Scott Services, uh, has had a crew out in a while, and I haven't seen the jails, uh, with crews out, which usually happens in winter. Uh, but as far as our animal, our litter control, uh, where that's assigned a highway, uh, he has people assigned, but it's not like the crews you see with the trucks, so.
I just noticed there's getting to be a lot of trash alongside the roads and...
Yeah, it always happens in the winter, because, uh, the vet station goes down and, and, uh, for whatever reason, uh, uh, it seems to accumulate in winter, but it seems to have happened quicker this year than that one. I could, uh, I can call, uh, the jail and see if they have plans to get crews out and talk to Scott Services and see why they haven't had crews out.
Thank you, Bill. Uh, I've got two more things, too. Uh, I think sometimes we need to talk about, maybe we're having such a hard time keeping drivers and stuff, of maybe leasing out the trash pickup and stuff, sometimes we, the whole board needs to discuss that, see what we think, or talk to the waste management and see what they charge.
We have met with waste management, and they're working on a proposal.
Okay, all right. That'll come up shortly, I guess.
Well, then, in a matter of seconds.
Okay. Thank you on that. I've got one more thing. Uh, land use taxes. I've had some calls on this, and I'll give some of the information on it, and sometime we need to maybe discuss that.
You're talking about the farmers, the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Would you lock that as an agenda item for February?
We could, yes. If, uh, I don't know how many of yous are aware of it, but a lot of the counties has it, what is it, seventy-three out of Virginia or something, local counties have it, and Scott County don't, but it's just a something to discuss. I don't know where it's good for the county or bad for the county, but I've talked to Frieda about it, and Sally about it, and I've talked to Debbie Dopri about it, but anyway, uh, maybe it's something the whole board needs to discuss and see whether we're interested or not interested, or it's going to cost the county to do it and all that. But anyway, you can put it on the agenda, we'll talk about it, just what everybody thinks. That's all I got.
Okay. Thanks, sir. Mr. Tipton?
I'll just, you know, with what Daryl had spoken about, with, uh, trash along Highway fifty-eight, there's been a lot of trash up and down through there on both sides of the road. I'm not sure where it's coming from, but, um, then the only other thing I have is, I lost a good friend this week, uh, just a tribute to him, he served in the Marine Corps for twenty-four years, and Trevor Chapman, so our hearts go out to him or his family. So be much a prayer for them.
I guess. Thanks, sir. And thank you for your service, Marshall. You've been, how many years you been?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-two. I honor our veterans, I really do appreciate where we are and our freedom and those that serve, and thank you for your service. Mr. Tarrant?
Of course, we're in a time of year, you know, it's going to be, the roads are going to be getting in bad shape, you know, and we had pretty good weather for a while, but all this rain, I'm sure. You know, I, I would like to see VDOT here a little bit more. Uh, you know, I, last year, I only remember them being here maybe twice, maybe three times, and maybe that's all they need to come, I don't know, but we do need more information on what's going on, because we're, we're being asked questions about these roads, and then it seems like it takes two years for some of this stuff to, uh, or even more. Uh, and I've got places that they've, they've not been able to fix, you know, and if, if, if they're not able to fix it, just tell us they're not able to fix it. And that, that way, we could pass it on to, to, to the people. Uh, but, uh, you know, I was going to say something about the land use tax, I've, I've had, uh, a lot of people ask me about it, you know, I, I don't know, I know just enough about it to be dangerous. So, uh, you know, we need all the information that we can get about that, uh, you know, I, I have heard, you know, at, uh, like Lee County maybe, and Russell County's got it, but we need to know what they're basing that on, uh, you know, we need to know what their tax rate is, you know, uh, for their, you know, if, we just need to have all the information on it that, that we can get, uh, uh, before, before we decide anything, so, uh, that, that could help. I've had a, a, a family in Big Moxon that's had some problems with some dogs, uh, uh, you know, that seems to be, it's not a very big occurrence, I don't think, but, uh, there's, we did all we can do as a county, uh, you know, I, I don't feel like that there's much more we can do. Uh, you know, I've talked, talked with Bill about it, and, you know, uh, animal control and, uh, but what I, what I would like to ask the people of the county to do is, is to have, uh, a little bit of responsibility for their property, their animals, you know, uh, just, just this weekend, uh, you know, I had a, something happened with my cattle. They was ninety-seven steers run, some of them went a mile away, I've still got four that's missing, you know, so, you know, we, we, I, I don't know what happened, but, uh, you know, we, we, we need to have responsibility for our animals, especially our, our dogs and cats.
Yes.
Uh, you know, because that, that, that can cause a, a big, big problem. Uh, hope this year's a whole lot better than last year, and, uh, we'll see how things go.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Ricky?
I just want to echo what Daryl said about, uh, county trash collection. With the cost of those trucks, Bill, you can correct me if I'm wrong, around two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each. The repair to them that we've seen over the past two years, we, we've had to shut down a lot of, of, uh, collection sites because of repairs. It just, it, it's really time that we look at another method, and I appreciate the staff off going ahead and, and, uh, and starting to take a look at that, but when it comes up, we need to discuss it and, and all the alternatives, and just, just see what else might be out there. That's all I have.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Sood?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Krueger?
I'd just like to say welcome everybody to twenty-twenty-two. I think this year's going to be a good year. I mean, that's what I'm hoping and praying for. Um, I appreciate the board's vote of confidence for the vice chairman. It is an honor to serve with each one of you, um, in that role, and in case Mr. Mann decides to take a vacation or something during the, or something.
Yeah, I'm saving it, I suppose, who knows?
What?
Yeah.
Okay, but no, uh, but no, I appreciate the board, I appreciate all the staff, and, um, I'm just looking forward to a good year.
The one thing about the trash, uh, I think the biggest contributor along the highways is people pick up trucks hauling stuff and, especially plastic bags, you'll see them, they blow out, and so secure your load, that's a lot of it. If you look, it's the stuff blown out, you'll see, you know, feedbags, dog food bags, where it's blown out in people's truck and so on, but anyway, that is, I think, is, is some of the contributing factor to that. Uh, on the trash, we'll, like I said, we need to look at that, and we, Ricky talked to, uh, Mr. Daniels about maybe doing something different than what we're doing as far as the trash pickup. Uh, and again, going back to our audit, commend all of you for getting us to another year, um, budget year, and I know we did it June thirtieth, but we always get a report this time of the year, and it was, it was a good audit. All right.
Could I go back to the trash thing just for a quick second? Do we not have a committee on, on that before?
We do. We'll meet once we get the proposal from Waste Management.
And who, who was on the committee? I know I was on the committee.
Um, Daryl, Marshall, Stacy, me, Bill.
Okay.
Uh, Jason will take Brady's place, and Gus.
Okay.
Mr. Sutton, go ahead.
I was thinking, uh, Jeremy said we needed information on the land use taxes. Uh, Frieda has that, can you make Krueger and Hood and Ricky and Danny?
I have them.
Him a copy? Marshall and I will have a copy of it.
Okay. The packet you brought me?
Yeah, so they can look at it before we discuss it.
You want a hard copy or email?
Email, fine.
Email's fine with me.
I just, I just briefly looked at that. Isn't that kind of an opt-in option? Uh, they, they opt in individually, or is that something you do?
It's individual, you can, you can opt in or you can opt out. You don't have to get in it because it's done, you can either opt in or you can opt out. And then you opt in, you, the way I understand it, you have to, uh, talk to the Commissioner of Revenue, and she sets it up and all that stuff.
Right.
Am I, is, is that correct? Am I saying it correctly?
I think so. Would that be something we would need to decide on, or?
You would have to decide if that's something you wanted to do on your tax structure, and just set a rate.
And then I think Debbie has to be involved.
She needs it. Definitely.
Because she's the one that has to handle all the paperwork, so she, see if she, I talked to her, see if she can handle the workload and all of that, that would become real. Uh, I have mixed feelings on it myself, I've...
And you're a farmer, and you, so...
Hifeh is farming, Hifeh is against me, although I'm a farmer, I mean, it, it's got its good points and it's got its bad points, so, uh, that's the reason everybody needs to look it over and read that and clutter your mind up like mine is.
You just have to really, really be, be careful, you know, my, like, if your property's worth maybe twenty-five hundred dollars an acre, you know, that's the way it is now. If, if you go on the land use tax, let's say you've got cleared pasture land, well, that might go up to thirty-five hundred dollars an acre, and your wooded area might go down to maybe eighteen or fifteen. I, that, that's sort of how I understood it, and, you know, you do really have to be careful. What I wish could happen is that we, uh, had, had all this assessed out and have it already broke down, you know, that's going to be a big thing, you know, but somebody's going to have to go to, well, I wouldn't want to end all of it, but some, somebody will have to go to each individual property and, and break your property down to, from cliff to hayfield to pasture land, you know, now it's all as one, so...
Can you make him out to the good and buy on?
You might, you might not. And, and, and the tax rate, you know, like, it was brought up to me several times, Lee County's got it, Lee County, well, what's their tax rate, though? You know, we still might not be paying as much taxes as what they are on their land, I don't know, I have no idea. That's something we need to look at, just, just, it is a, I mean, it, it would be a big change, uh, on, eh, any way you look at it, you might come out to the good and you might not, it just depends, uh, unless there's, there's other types of land use things that we could do, uh, maybe that's, I, I don't know, I have no idea, I know enough about it, just a big danger.
There's three categories you can go into, you can go into forestry, uh, farming, and then the other one is, uh, the parks and stuff, right?
Exactly.
Does it include, like, cell phone towers on your property? Because that's a extra tax.
Not that I'm aware of.
So it's not under that umbrella?
The cell phone tower companies pay the property tax.
Right.
For those people that, where they have the towers.
Right, because I got a call from a fellow, I think I turned it over to Sally, about taxes on his property that were higher than he thought they should be, and it was because he had that cell tower.
But that's usually our agreement, that that cell tower company will pay that tax?
On these three things, you go into, you can go into one of them, or you can do them all three, you don't have to do all three, you can do one of the three, or you can do all three, or you can do two of them, it, well, you'll see it when you get the package and go over it to...
I'll link all that out later today.
One last issue, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Us dealing with the tax. We had just a brief discussion last time, but I think we need to get to some, we can have a discussion about the local tax assessor's office, and, uh...
That would be my comments, I was going to talk about, but go ahead.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That's fine, go ahead, because I was going to mention it, too, and, uh...
Yeah.
And what he's saying, we do this assessment every six years required by law. Uh, upfront, it would cost a little bit more to establish a office of assessment, having somebody work here, I guess work under the Commissioner of Revenue is how that would be, uh, but I think in the long run, people get in this six-year sticker shop, whatever you want to call it, it's a six-year assessment, actually, and I, and I think I'm correct on this, I'm not criticizing two thousand and fifteen assessment, reassessment, but I don't think we got a good, good assessment, as we did this time, uh, so probably it's equal to about a twelve-year assessment. And, uh, but anyway, we didn't get enough the last time, hardly to pay for the assessment. And so we've got to operate the county for six years, and we'll have a, a bump in revenue, you know, the first two or three, four years, but as time goes on, it starts going away when you get to the end of the six-year cycle. Uh, but I, I, we need to look at this, and the, and the assessor's office would be something to be ongoing, where you would get something every year rather than every six years. For example, I'm at thirty-one percent, well, you spread that over six years, five percent a year, you know, it's not, it's sort of hard, you know, a little bit easier to swallow, but when you get that, that bump, uh, every six years, uh, and I've heard many, some people hundred, two hundred percent increase, but I think we need to look, give some serious consideration to that. Upfront, it would cost a little bit, excuse me, I've got a little bit of a problem on that, but anyway, I'm going to need to look at that and get the Commissioner of Revenue involved in it to establish that, and that wouldn't work for the Commissioner of Revenue, is that what we said, if we did that, Frieda?
Yes.
So, give it a serious consideration, the other, the other counties are doing that, I know Wise County does, I want my leader, Russell, that something we need to think about to establish that office now. Anytime that you increase, uh, when you establish something like that, you know, more employees and vehicles and stuff, it's going to be all in the, in doing that, and, uh, but I think it's something we need to seriously look at, because people have so many issues with the six-year bump that they're getting, in some cases, twelve years, because, like I said, the assessment was kind of questionable, but I'm not going to get into that, but anyway, something to think about, and you're right on target, I think, Marshall's to bring that up and, uh, for discussion.
I have talked to Wise County in the past, and they've been very good to talk to, and said they would be willing to do this with whatever we needed.
Wow.
I wonder if they have just one person that does it, Frieda?
No, they have a couple different ones.
Couple?
I think maybe three.
They do it all in, every year?
Not every property, it's like a rolling basis.
So you do A through E this year, F through whatever next year, so likely that would be kind of...
I don't know what the process is, but it wasn't everything every year.
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be a job to try to do it.
Especially starting out. That would be...
Establishing your baseline.
And you'll need a clerical person, too, probably, and a couple done, so it's going to be expensive upfront, we're paying about three hundred thousand now they're about to get it done every six years, and it would cost more than that, you know, if we establish an office, but upfront, it's going to cost more in the long term, I believe, we'd be better off, and it would help the citizens to not have this every six-year bump that they get, and it's, uh, something we need to think about.
And I think, I think also, it's supposed to get to the, uh, what the, the tax assessment is supposed to do to begin with, to get us at the framework value, and I think managing through the local tax assessment would be able to do that much better.
All right. Anything else before we close?
I do have one thing.
Okay. Okay.
John Kilgore and myself will be going to Richmond, uh, in February, those dates are February sixteenth through the eighteenth, if, uh, any of you are interested in attending as well, we'll be meeting with several state agencies at that time. Just send me a message and let me know if you're interested.
I usually go to that, and if you've not been, I encourage you to go, uh, because you'll see how things work there, and, uh, and so, the thing about the people we have, you know, John Kilgore, they, we're blessed to have him, uh, some of the counties love to have him, because they know him there, they go with a first-name basis, they go, and so, it's been a real positive for our county to, to do that, and then when we go, and they, they really appreciate you coming, they do. You guys need a little badge, you're ignoring, I know who you are.
Is there a legislative day, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth of this month, January?
The VACO legislative day is early February.
Okay, I guess this, this might be Farm Bureau, I don't know.
Maybe, 'cause everybody's got their specific.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Yeah, VACO is early February, like, maybe third, fourth, somewhere around there.
I'd encourage you to go, so maybe I've gone before with, you know, I intend to go, and, uh, so.
There's not a reception or anything like that, this will just be meetings.
Was it two days?
Yeah, two nights.
All right.
I think that's a Wednesday through Friday, if I'm not mistaken. Come back on Friday.
All right, anything else before we close? When do we meet in February, what's the date?
Second.
Second.
Groundhog Day. Two, 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 two.
That's not too far away.
No, it ain't, three, four, you know. All right, nothing else, we will adjourn, and we'll be back here February, the staff and the Lord will. God bless you.